All right, good evening. We're going to call the meeting's order tonight at 7:00 PM. I'm going to introduce myself. I'm Lauren Christensen, Vice President, and I will start over with Josh Patterson.
Hello, everyone. I'm Josh Patterson, and I'm the Plymouth, I'm a Plymouth sophomore and the Student Voice in Action Co-Chair. Good to see you all tonight.
Judy?
Welcome tonight. I'm Judy Westra. Thank you for coming out on this beautiful night.
Hi, I'm Patrick Keough. Thanks for coming out tonight. Great to see so many faces in the audience.
Good evening. I'm Anupam Chigadu. Nice to see all of you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Cheryl Picard, and welcome. Glad to see you here tonight.
Patty McLean, thank you for coming out tonight. Hope everybody voted already.
Polls close date.
Polls close date, exactly. Dr. Barrett, can you introduce yourself and your team?
Good evening and welcome, and I will also agree that we have the best seat in the House because we're looking across a room full of our amazing students and their supportive families, and we're looking forward to celebrating you this evening. Thank you for being here. I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant, Ms. Diane Robertson. We want to thank her for being here at every meeting and capturing our minutes for us. I'd like to ask the remaining members of the team to introduce themselves with you. I forgot Carly. But go ahead, Carly Rae, introduce yourself.
Carly Rae, Communications and Marketing.
Good evening, Curtis Tiskowitz, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services.
Good evening. Jill Minnick, Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Beth Rail, Chief Academic and Innovation Officer. Thanks for being here tonight.
I'm Lisa Anglin. I am the Executive Director of Human Resources.
Thank you. Now we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Josh, can you lead us in that, please?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, on to the adoption of the agenda and approval of the consent agenda. Can I please have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Madam Vice President, I move that we adopt the agenda, approve the consent agenda, action item number 24-02-54.
Second?
It was moved by Secretary Sado and seconded by Treasurer Keough. Dr. Barrett, can you take us through the agenda?
Yes, Vice President Christensen, this evening our consent agenda consists of human resources transactions since our last time together. We have two new champions for your consideration to welcome to the PCCS team this evening. As new hires, we have leaves, resignations, and retirements. We also have the approval of the minutes for our special meeting. That was on February 13th, 2024. Our regular meeting, February 13th, 2024, special meeting minutes for February 21st, 2024. We have the first reading of the following bylaws and policies. Bylaw 0122, that's Board Powers; policy 1420, School Administrator Evaluation; policy 3120, Employment of Personnel; policy 3139, Staff Discipline; policy 3140, Termination and Resignation; policy 3220, Professional Staff Evaluation; and policy 3244, that is our Individualized Development Plan. And finally, we have our final reading of policy 7540.03, our Student Technology Acceptable Use and Safety, as well as 7540.04, Staff Technology Acceptable Use and Safety.
Thank you, Dr. Barrett. I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes 6-0. Dr. Anglin, can you take us through Human Resources?
Good evening, and thank you. So tonight, I'm introducing two of our new hires that we're excited to bring forward. First, we have Ms. Caroline Connor, and she has been hired as a Technology Integration Specialist here in Plymouth Canton Community Schools. Ms. Connor is a graduate of the University of Michigan. She has her master's degree and bachelor's degree, also from Western Michigan University, and she was previously a Library Media Specialist at Oxford High School. We're excited to welcome her to Plymouth Canton. Congratulations. All right, and next, we have Mr. Abdul Madun. Mr. Madun is going to be the new Chief Human Resource Officer here at Plymouth Canton Community Schools, and I'm excited to welcome him to our district. Mr. Madun has his law degree and is previously the Executive Director of Human Resources in North Vale Schools. He is also previously the Director of Human Resources in Van Buren Schools. He comes to us also as a certified administrator with experience as an administrator and a teacher, so we're excited to welcome his breadth of knowledge and experience to our district. Mr. Madun, would you like to say a few words?
I just thank you guys for the opportunity to be able to serve the district that I actually live in. So it's real nice to actually live in a district and know a bit about the culture of the community. So I'm looking very forward for this challenge and hoping for big things for all of us.
Great, welcome. Thank you, Dr. Barrett. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, on to celebrating success with Member Picard.
This evening, the Board of Education will once again celebrate our school community with a Stars Award. And just so everybody knows, that means students with tenacity achieving and reaching success for a group of amazing and talented band and choir students from Discovery, West, East, Liberty, and Pioneer Middle Schools, as well as the Plymouth Canton Educational Park. Every year, the Michigan School Vocal Music Association and the Michigan School Band and Orchestra Association hold auditions for elite ensembles. The ensembles include regional honors choirs, state honors choirs, and all-state bands and orchestras offered at both the middle and high school levels. To be considered, excuse me, to be considered for these ensembles, students prepare to perform a very difficult audition piece before competing against students from all across the state of Michigan. Of the thousands of students who audition, only a handful are selected as members of state ensembles. We would also like to honor Alana Lake and Miles Dupree, who served as the PCEP Marching Band's 2023 Drum Majors. Their hard work, dedication, passion, and leadership was displayed consistently throughout the marching band season. The success of the ensemble in large is part due to their guidance. This year, PCCS was well represented when the state ensembles were announced. Tonight, we want to celebrate the success of our fabulous musicians. Congratulations to all of these students on their amazing accomplishments. And at this time, I would like to invite Mike Wells, PCEP Director of Bands, and Katherine Williams, Visual and Performing Arts Curriculum Coordinator, along with our wonderful middle school choir and band directors, to say a few words about these amazing young people.
Come on up.
Hi, I'm Jessie Bouchard. I am the band director at Pioneer Middle School. Thank you so much for having us and our amazing students out here tonight. We are incredibly proud of them, and we wanted to share their success with you. I'm going to talk a little bit about how the all-state band works. Over 2,500 students across the entire state of Michigan audition for a middle school band, a high school band, a middle school orchestra, and a high school orchestra, and a high school jazz band, and only about 200 to 250 students are selected in total. So it is a very, very limited number of students, and we are lucky enough to have three representatives from our middle schools that were selected to be in these ensembles. It's an incredible honor, like, much like making states as an athlete, even more to some degree just because of the level of competition. So thank you for having us out. That's the band. I know Ms. Covington's going to talk about the choir a little bit.
Or Ursula? Okay. We'll go together. We'll go together.
Good evening. Thank you for having us both here. I am the choir director at Discovery Middle School.
And I am the choir director at East Middle School, Ursula Mason.
So our students have to memorize, prepare, record, and submit in a very specific way several songs in each of their vocal parts, both to get into regionals and to get into states. It's a very comprehensive and difficult procedure, and we're very, very proud of all of them who were able to make it into those state ensembles.
Thank you so much for honoring our students tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. I don't really have specifics, but the thing I do want to just echo what everyone's saying tonight is that we have some amazing students, and they, you know, every single one of these have individually earned these awards. This is not a participation trophy. This is something that they've really spent the time to, put in the time and effort that it takes to, again, record and go out of their way to do this outside of the classroom. I mean, I think that's something that we should really all acknowledge, is that this is something that is going above and beyond the education that, you know, we're giving them. They're taking, you know, their own time to audition and take lessons and meet with teachers and things like that to make this happen. And so it's really a special, special occasion. And I can say that, you know, for our high school students as well, they're all leaders in everything that they do, and that's in all of their classes, not only the music classes. The other thing I just want to just point out is that our district has done a wonderful job in the last couple of months supporting the arts. We've added positions with Ms. Kathy Williams as a Fine Arts Coordinator. The district's been investing in the arts programs as far as facilities and financial, you know, things, and this is just the start of it. And so, you know, it's reminding me of a saying that a colleague of mine had that was, you know, we can be happy but not satisfied. And I think that the students here are very happy, and I hope that they're happy, but I also know that they're going to, they're going to go home and keep practicing. And I hope that the district as well has that mindset of we can be happy with the arts, and we're very happy where we are, but let's not stop. Let's continue to look for ways to support these students and continue to look for ways that we can elevate the arts and do more for these students because they really do deserve that. So thank you again for everything you've done, and thank you for having us here tonight. And I'll turn over to Ms. Williams.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Kathy Williams, Visual and Performing Arts Coordinator. It's such a pleasure to be here to celebrate our fine students, our families, our band and choir directors, and our, our school board and our school administrators, because all together, they support these programs that turn out such a great performance of students. So without further ado, I would like to recognize the students, and there's not enough room up here to come stand. After we call all the names, then we'll applaud, and then we'll meet families downstairs for pictures. And so I, it is my hope that I say your name the way you like to hear it.
Okay. In our MSVMA Regional Honors Choir, we have Megan Eck, Maisy Groff, Farah Ismail, Kendall Plaweki, Anaya Rochoudary, Sanvi Yadav, Isabella Gammay, Remak Kar, Ali Veridi, Talia Kante, Olivia Hudson, Elise Lemieux, Sarah Alasi, Mahika Shiva Stava, Simon Buian, Dia Nabule. In our MSVMA State Honors Choir, we have Kayden Jones, Eve Bradford, Elena Alexave, Clevis Mirbeli, Mallory Broadwater, Grenette Conwar, Elena Lara, Allison Mayer, Oren Rashid, Shritula Ravindran, Amelia Rousseau, Addison Sayir, Daniel Tyler, Jess Vanderveen, Owen Harrigan, William Timmerman, Rain King, Nisa Bala Merrily Krishnan, Michaela Mason, Maria Flores, Simone Huntley, Harini Koparabu. In MSBOA, Middle School All-State Band, we have Haley Lang, Owen Hamilton, Michael Liberty, and last but not least, our PCEP Drum Majors in the Marching Band, Elena Lake and Miles Dupree. Thank you, everyone.
Just so you know, normally, I would distribute these certificates. However, because our group is so large tonight, we're going to change things up a bit and have you head downstairs and then for the photograph, and then the students will have a chance to grab their certificates downstairs. So thank you and congratulations again.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Anytime doors are open. You want to schedule, Kathy's got calendars, so you are welcome to any, you're welcome. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right. As the crowd is moving out, I am going to move on to the Board Committee Reports in Action. First up is the President's Report. President Wilson is not able to make it today due to some business travel, so we are going to move on to Student Performance and Achievement Committee with Secretary Sado.
Thank you, Vice President Christensen. I have no new updates since the last report out on February 13th. We do have a meeting coming up on March 6th here in this room at 5:00. Hope to see some of you there.
On to Policy with Member McLean.
Thank you. We actually met tonight, and we got through quite a few of our policies. Many of them were putting onto teaching and learning to get some information to make sure that they're up to date. We'd like to thank Mr. Tiskowitz for filling in. He was thrilled to be back. And just for anybody who sees, we had quite a few first reads, and just to be clear, if you are looking at those policies, they are due to the change in the law that went into effect February 13th. So in some of the policies, there is changes that went in February 13th, and then there are additional changes that are going in for the next school year. So that's why you will see multiple dates in some of them, because some of those changes do not happen until the next school year. But our next meeting is March 12th because of the spring break that will be coming up. It's 5:30 down in the collaboration space. Everyone is welcome.
Great, thank you. Okay, on to Finance and Operations Committee with Treasurer Keough.
Thank you. We met last Thursday, February 22nd, here in this room, and we had a great update on the Tanger Property disposition, and that'll be coming up on a future board process here. We also reviewed the East Middle School and West Middle School furniture purchases. They'll be on the agenda for this evening. We talked about a technology bid packages for the structured cabling and network and other related equipment at the number of the projects that we're doing across the PCEP campus. And we reviewed the mid-year budget amendment that will also be up on the process this evening. We discussed the 2024-2025 budget assumptions that'll be coming up in the board meeting, I believe, on March 12th. And we also reviewed the financial statements as of January 31st, 2024. The next Finance and Operations Committee meeting is Thursday, March 7th, 5:00 PM here in this room. Again, we welcome the community to come to an exciting meeting.
All right, on to Student Voice in Action Committee with Josh Patterson.
Hello. So we met yesterday, February 26th, and had many positive discussions and worked towards looking over the student handbook, specifically the dress code, and looked at it from a student perspective and what might we want to change or advise change towards the student, or not the handbook, Student Handbook Committee. And then we also talked about nutrition and moving forward. At our previous, previous meeting, we discussed nutrition with the Nutrition Services Directors, and go, we, at this meeting, we were discussing our next steps. Our next meeting is March 18th at 6:00 PM in the Canton Library. I hope to see you there.
Thank you, Josh. On to Administrative Reports and Recommendations. Dr. Barrett?
Thank you, Vice President Christensen. If you will indulge me, the opportunity to brag about our amazing students and staff and program, I always appreciate this opportunity to really lift up and highlight their accomplishments. I want to begin tonight by saluting Plymouth High School senior Anurudh Krishnan, who was recognized for his athletic excellence, stellar academic record, and community service recently when he won the Michigan High School Athletic Association. They named him one of 32 winners of this year's Scholar Athletes Award. This award is the highest honor that the MHSAA bestows on students each year. Mr. Krishnan has been recognized as an all-state level runner for Plymouth's track and cross-country teams, and he has excelled academically at PCEP. Away from the classroom and track, he has founded and serves as the Director of the AK Friendship Cycle nonprofit, and that's an organization supporting young adults with disabilities. He earned a Ted Lindsey Foundation Family Courage Award for his contributions towards autism education, and he has participated in the University of Michigan's Youth Dialogues on Race and Ethnicity in Metropolitan Detroit. He has chosen to attend John Hopkins University, where he will study applied mathematics and statistics. He will receive his award on March 16th during the MHSAA Boys Basketball Finals at the Breslin Student Event Center in East Lansing. So we want to congratulate and applaud him. We're going to continue to congratulate our PCEP art students. They have earned honors at a prestigious contest. Nine of our students in arts education were honored for the outstanding work this month at the prestigious Scholastic Arts and Writing Awards. This is the nation's longest-running, most prestigious recognition program for creative teens in the United States. Professional artists judge the students' work, and thousands of works from students across the state of Michigan are entered into the show. PCEP winners included our Sydney McComb received a Gold Key Ceramics and Glass Award, Alexandra Zarotti, honorable mention for painting, Kira Stanley, honorable mention for painting, Lucas Gentilia, Silver Key for Photography, Syed Jaffrey, Silver Key for Photography, Anuita Palaru, Silver Key for Photography, and honorable mention for Photography, and a Gold Key for Photography. Chloe Samples, Gold Key for Photography, McKinney Senet, honorable mention for Photography, and Ethan Sang, honorable mention Photography. So these students will be honored, they were honored earlier this month at the Detroit Institute of Arts, and their work will be exhibited at the College for Creative Studies in Detroit until March. So if you have an opportunity to go and check that out, I think you will not be disappointed. The honors continue. Salem's Ryan Peters reaches a 1,000-point milestone, so we want to congratulate, all of PCCS wants to congratulate, Ryan's Peters. He's a senior at Salem High School. He's on the high school basketball team. He reached an incredibly significant milestone last week when he scored his 1,000 career points, 1,000. He's an amazing player. He was recently named to the KLAA All-Conference Team. So we want to congratulate Coach Ryan Nemmermuth and the entire Salem Boys Basketball Program for this fantastic achievement. This weekend, we were blown away to hear that our students at East Middle School are not only school chess champions, but they have won this for the unprecedented third year in a row. Again, so we want to congratulate them. That's our East Middle School Chess Team for winning the Michigan Middle School Chess Championship. This is their third year in a row. Each student had a perfect record, did you hear me? Each student had a perfect record in the competition against students from around the entire state. Now, you can't tell me that our students don't rock. This championship qualifies them for the national finals this spring. So let's keep calling out their name and offering support to these young students because they are shining. I just want to give a reminder, when we talk about our students, we talk about our staff, we also have to amplify our incredible programs and opportunities for our students. So I want to talk about the Early Middle College, the Open House. Of course, we pride ourselves here in PCCS for being able to offer students a variety of learning opportunities at all levels to really help them find their level of success, whatever a student really defines as that level of success. So next month, we're going to invite families of eighth and ninth grade students that are looking for advanced learning opportunities to this Open House for our Early Middle College Program. This is going to be on March 6th. The program sees students begin blending their high school coursework with college-level coursework as early as the 10th grade, depending on the major path of study. Students will then add additional college courses each year to transition to a full schedule of college coursework by following a specific program of study. So students in the Early Middle College will advance through their educational path and start their career years faster than through a traditional educational program, and they will have the chance to earn college credit at no cost to students or families. This Open House is going to allow our families the opportunity to speak with PCCS staff and representatives from our partner colleges. We're working with School Craft as well as Washtenaw Community College. That will take place again on March 6th. The time is from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. This is Room 401 of Plymouth High School. So we want to encourage all interested families to attend. Just want to wrap up with a school of, a few of our school of choice as well as intra-district choice offerings. We know that at our last board meeting, the board approved our school of choice process. We run a simultaneous window for our families in our district that would like to be considered for intra-district transfer to different schools within our district. So with this, the same window, the program will allow our resident families of PCCS students to apply for a transfer to a different PCCS school. Schools in grade levels where intra-district transfers will be accepted, they vary from year to year based on the space that we have available in the rooms. The deadline for intra-district transfers is March 14th. Believe it or not, March 1st is coming up this Friday, so we want to just make sure they're keeping that information out there. And you can visit our website at PCCSK12.com for more information. And at the same time, we're looking at our school of choice applications. The window will open on March 15th. Remember that we are required to advertise for 30 days, followed by the open application window. As a reminder, schools of choice seats are open to students in kindergarten through 10th grade. Students living in Wayne, Washtenaw, McComb, Oakland, and Monroe Counties are eligible to apply. The application deadline is April 13th. And more information, of course, is available on our website. So as we continue to highlight these accomplishments of our students, absolutely, we want to encourage all to experience these opportunities for students at PCCS. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Barrett. So much to celebrate. Moving on to Finance and Operations with Jill Minnick.
Good evening. Thank you, Vice President Christensen. It's my pleasure to bring forward for your consideration this evening the purchase of furniture and equipment as part of Bid PAC MS2 East and West Middle Schools. As part of our planning for the 2020 bond campaign, every building in the district was assessed, and one of the main needs that surfaced was new furnishings and equipment. The purchase for furnishings for Bid PAC MS2 East-West Middle Schools, the recommended pieces are flexible, durable, purposefully chosen, with consideration to flexibility and equity across all of our middle schools. This purchase includes general education and special education classrooms, learning commons, and main offices at each building. TMP received quotes from furniture vendors on February 5th. All quotes were obtained through purchasing consortiums. The quotes that were received result in a total cost for the furniture and equipment in amount of $1,115,787.15. This does result in a positive variance from the budget in the amount of $354,212.85. So that's good news. The settlement was presented at the February 22 Finance and Operations Committee meeting. So this evening, we have Derek Dinkaloo and Jen Mayno to present more detail around the furniture. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Moving on to Finance and Operations with Jill Minnick.
Good evening. Thank you, Vice President Christensen. It's my pleasure to bring forward for your consideration this evening the purchase of furniture and equipment as part of Bid PAC MS2 East and West Middle Schools. As part of our planning for the 2020 bond campaign, every building in the district was assessed, and one of the main needs that surfaced was new furnishings and equipment. The purchase for furnishings for Bid PAC MS2 East-West Middle Schools, the recommended pieces are flexible, durable, purposefully chosen, with consideration to flexibility and equity across all of our middle schools. This purchase includes general education and special education classrooms, Learning Commons, and main offices at each building. TMP received quotes from furniture vendors on February 5th. All quotes were obtained through purchasing consortiums. The quotes that were received result in a total cost for the furniture and equipment in an amount of $1,115,787.15. This does result in a positive variance from the budget in the amount of $354,212.85. So that's good news. The set-in was presented at the February 22nd Finance and Operations Committee meeting. So this evening, we have Derek Dinkaloo and Jen Mayno to present more detail around the furniture. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Could not have said that better. Thank you so much, Jill. I do want to point out that during our process, we also did have 11 students, six from West and five from East, who were able to participate throughout the process. Jumping into the furniture selections, a lot of this is a reiteration of the MS1 Pioneer Middle School Furniture Package that was designed last year. So we took their feedback, and we tailored around that feedback to make a few changes. Do I control this? Sorry, okay, great. The first two slides you'll see are just the composite plans for East and West, outlining the spaces that were furnished between both schools, between the general education, science classrooms, and special education classrooms, a total of 29 classrooms, plus the Learning Commons and the main office furniture. For general education classrooms, this is the same kit of components at both East and West Middle School. We furnished 32 student stations with an attic stock to infill if we have, happen to have a class where there's more than 32 students. The typical student table, that did get slightly smaller from the last iteration, but it's the same table. And then, we did change the student chair when last, for MS1. We did a chair, the same chair, just with a different base. It had casters in that star base. We changed to a cantilever chair. Still has a lot of flexibility. It can stack and move out of the way, and helps support those micro-movements and fidgeting within learning. And then, your teacher furniture station is the same as last time. We have the teacher table, some personal storage, and the teacher chair. In science classrooms, at East, we elected to go with the same kit of components that we did at Pioneer Middle School. We did slightly decrease the size, just because their classrooms are a little bit smaller. But the table is exactly the same. It is height adjustable, but it's a set height at 36 inches, paired with a 24-inch stool, and then your teacher station. This one, we did furnish to a full 34-student station. We are not getting attic stock for the science classrooms. At West Middle School, they wanted to not do the standing height, so we are doing a seated height and pairing it with the typical student chair. That is the only difference between East and West. Special education classrooms are the same between East and West Middle School. They have eight individual student desks, two high-top group tables, and then two amoeba-shaped group tables, which are really great for collaboration, direct instruction, and group work, paired with our typical student chair and our typical student stool, and two teacher stations per special education classroom. Learning Commons between the two schools, you'll see the same functional zones. So we have entry in a welcome zone, a technology touchdown, large group instruction and collaboration, independent study, reading and quiet zones, and book display and storage. But how those functional zones were achieved, we kind of let them decide what was the best way to achieve those functions. So there is a little bit more differences in individuality between the two schools, but the functional zones are the same. And the really great thing about this furniture is that while we have it designated for large group instruction or independent study, this furniture is really great for small breakout groups and small group collaboration, and is easily moved around and rearranged to support a range of curriculum. On these slides, you can see how the furniture selections used to achieve those functional zones. We have some circulation desks. We have some student lounge furniture for large group collaboration, paired with some counters and chair heights at varying levels. We have student lounges that are individual, that can be pulled apart or pushed together. And then, we have the flip and nest tables, which are also really great for clearing. They nest together, so you can clear a large amount of floor space if you need that. And then, some fun lounge furniture included. And then, same functional zones that you saw at East, we're utilizing here at West. Some of the furniture is the same, and some of it is slightly different, but it accomplishes the same task. Again, we're seeing a circulation desk, some student lounge, large student lounge furniture, the flip and nest tables, the individual student lounges, and some ottomans and mobile marker boards. In this one, we did some booths for small group collaboration and gathering, and also as their technology touchdown area, and then some additional lounge furniture. For main offices, a lot of this is the same selections that we made at Pioneer. At East, we had the principal's office, a VP office, and a dean's office, the student alcove, a conference room, reception and admin, and some itinerant staff offices. This furniture is, the private office furniture is the same furniture that we've used throughout the district in all the main offices. It includes your systems furniture. The principal's office has a small conference table with additional desks, excuse me, guest chairs. The conference room has your conference table, credenza, and your conference chairs. And then, within the welcome area and the student alcove, we have some guest chairs. And then, for your itinerant staff offices, the same kit of components that we're seeing for the teacher desk is used for the itinerant staff offices. So they have the mobile storage for personal storage, their desk and their chair, two guest seating, and then a lateral file for additional storage. At West Middle School, we have the VP office and the principal's office for the two private offices, the welcome center, reception and admin, and the student alcove and the conference room. Same kit of components for, for West Middle School main office furniture. And that's all I have for due day. Do you have any questions?
Great, thank you. I'm going to start over here at my left with Member McQueen.
I do not have any questions. I do appreciate that you have student input. In this, it's very important as we try to center our education, and also that you take the feedback from previous ones and apply it. So thank you so much. This looks lovely. Thank you.
I do not have any questions. I thank you very much for all your work.
Secretary Sedu.
Thank you. Want to echo Tristee McQueen's comments with regard to student input and feedback. Love the mobility that you've added in here. And I'm looking at not just the chairs, but the mobile whiteboard, the lounge chairs, all the different variations of the furniture. It looks really cool. So I, for Dr. Merritt, I request that we have a tour there once, once, if approved. So my question about that is, when are you slated to, if approved, when does this go into the buildings? This summer? This summer?
Yes.
The, the office furniture, especially at East, which is an addition, will be, once the addition is done.
Oh, got it.
The classroom furniture and the Learning Commons will happen this summer.
Great, thank you.
Treasure Kehoe.
We talked about this extensively at FNO, and I, maybe I missed it in our board notes. We had some questions at FNO about some of the rooms that were not getting done, and what was the age of that furniture in that, in that process? Did we get that answered? Maybe I missed it in board notes.
I don't have the age, but I did go back and look through pictures, and the furniture did appear in good condition.
Okay. So perhaps if we can get into board notes, the, the age of when we did do those renovations in those other classrooms, that'd be appreciated.
Okay, of course.
Thank you.
Member Westra.
Patrick Kehoe's question may have partially answered my question. I was thinking about it, West, I know a number of teachers have furniture that, you know, they've, they've purchased or has been donated for the students. What happens, and I'm sure the same is true at East as well, what happens to that furniture? Can the teachers still continue to use it?
So I think that varies by school, and it's like a principal-led decision on how much they're able to keep. But I know we discussed at the FNO committee that any of the stuff that is in really bad condition gets thrown out. And then, furniture that is in good condition is donated or sold, correct?
We do have a dissolution of, of property policy, and so we follow that policy for any materials that are bought with district funds. But again, I think you're asking if there's donations or somebody's personal funds, which would not follow the policy in that space.
Okay. And then, what, about what percentage of the classrooms are being renovated? To kind of add on to your question.
There's only a few classrooms that are not. Some of the specialized classrooms and things like that. And that was the conversation we had at FNO, was to make sure we understand what those were. Some of those classrooms may have been part of a previous update or renovation, like the work that we did in the STEM Labs and things like that. And we just wanted to get some feedback on those that were not being done, and what was the basis for that.
Okay, thank you.
And the first few slides too, in the presentation, show highlighted areas which were, were scheduled to receive new furniture as well.
So it's, it is very minor. Okay, got it.
Anything that's not, anything that's not colored is not being, yeah. And some of them are like gymnasiums and cafeterias.
Yeah, that's what I thought when I looked at it, is that it was the big open spaces. Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate all your hard work in getting the student feedback and teacher feedback and everything. Thank you.
Josh, do you have any questions?
No questions. I just want to say thank you. I've seen you guys firsthand asking students for feedback, so thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a follow-up question that we didn't really touch on during FNO, but some of the questions from my fellow board members sparked this. If this is intended for summer installation, do we have any concerns around lead time? You know, that we were seeing some, you know, exaggerated lead times due to supply chain issues post-pandemic. Some of those things obviously have alleviated, but how are we feeling about, about these items?
The longest lead time right now is at about 16 weeks. So we did build that into the schedule, and so I feel very confident that everything will come in time.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda for your consideration is approval for 2020 Bond Project Technology Contract Bid PAC T8, which is an E-Rate Structured Cabling and Network Infrastructure Project related to additions and renovations at Plymouth High School, Canton High School, East Middle School, West Middle School, and the C, or rather, the PCEP new stadium. School districts are eligible for a partial reimbursement of some telecommunications services under the federal E-Rate Universal Service Fund program. Federal regulations require a district to bid on these services. And as such, we, in fact, followed the appropriate newspaper bid requirements and published online. A virtual public bid opening was held on February 1st with eight bids received between two categories. Based on the evaluation, we present to you two vendors for award. Network electronics, to be awarded to People Driven Technologies in a bid amount of $132,383.81 with a 10% contingency. Structured cabling bid category to be awarded to Nerds Express in the amount of $129,234.27, as well with a 10% contingency, for a total contract award and project cost of $287,779.89. These purchases will be funded using the 2020 and 2023 Bond Funds. So with us this evening to share a little bit more detail is Brian Jesse and Matt Stoker with Barton Mallow and our Mark Salzer. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. So yeah, as, as mentioned, I won't re, rego through all of that. But this is related to the, the bond construction and renovations that will be happening over the next 12 to 18 months. For the USAC reimbursement for E-Rate Funds, you have to bid those out in a certain timeframe, and then those funds have to be, or those projects have to be put in place during an 18-month period from then onward. So each year, we bring you the next 12 to 18 months worth of projects, scope of work, as we bid out. So look to award that. One thing I will point out about the structured cabling contractors, they are a minority-owned business. And then, I guess the other thing maybe to note is that People Driven Technologies is, is a different vendor than you've seen in the past, but a very reputable network electronics vendor in the area. And so we're glad to see a little, you know, diversity in our bid submissions in that category. So with that, I guess I'd ask if you have any questions?
Member McQueen.
I don't have any questions. I assume you've covered this quite clearly at FNO, and had all the technical questions answered.
Member Picard.
Yeah, I do not have any questions either. Thank you.
Members Sedu.
No questions, but thanks for the thorough work. I'm looking at the documents with all of the yes and no questions that sometimes we ask. Everything's laid out here. And I want to thank the community, which I didn't mention, which is, I would say, trustee, or, Preacher Kehoe's job and Trustee McQueen's job, which is always thanking the community for all of the investments that you put into our school district. So this is part of that. So I want to thank the community. I want to thank all of you for your hard work.
And I would echo those thanks also to the federal government for their E-Rate program and the investments that we get as part of that. The other thing I wanted to mention is, is that we had an extensive conversation at FNO, specifically around the Innovation Hub and the CTE Wing that houses the robotics programs and has some unique networking requirements. And it was great to have the, the feedback and conversations that the team had with those instructors and staff and mentors as part of the, and the students as part of that process to make sure that we're well-suited for that innovation space. So thank you for all the hard work, and we look forward to this getting deployed.
I don't have anything to add, except my thanks to the community and to the government for, for funding this.
Josh?
I have nothing to add as well, but thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
And with that, we will move into, for your consideration, approval for review and approval for Project T9, which is a bid project, bid package for the 2020 Bond Program to provide equipment needed in learning, office, and activity athletic spaces at Canton High School, East Middle School, Plymouth High School, and West Middle School.
So again, related to those same projects, we also try to lump together the technology scopes of work as a lot of it is like smaller work related to some of the additions and renovations at, at some of these schools. And so we try to make that, you know, put that together in an attractive package for bidders to, to ensure we get, you know, good response. So there's three bid categories included in this, which are basically, we try to also separate it from that E-Rate eligible stuff because it has other requirements as far as like the duration, it has to be out to bid and such. So we put it, a separate bid package out specifically to keep it separate, you know, and not muddy the water with the USAC language. But the three categories here are the audiovisual systems related to all of those projects, the paging and clocks related to those projects, which is expansion of the existing systems. We did a large paging replacement project in the last 12 months that is just wrapping up. So this is expansion on those new invested, new investments you've made in those systems. And then, video surveillance and access control, which again is a, it's an expansion of your existing, it's different model cameras as they come out all the time, but it's the same manufacturers and, and product lines that you've seen in the past and that you've invested in, and are broad-scale in the district. One thing that I will also note on here, we also added in a, there's an audiovisual allowance to purchase things through another previous bid package we did, Bid PAC D5, which is a phased-in installation of classroom technology at the elementaries, which is interactive flat panels. So we put an allowance in there to utilize unit pricing from that bid, which was competitively bid, to purchase interactive flat panels on carts for the Innovation Hub at Canton High School. So that's something that I'm probably seeing on some of our other award presentation letters, but that's included here as well. So with that, I guess I'd open up for any questions?
Member McQueen.
I don't have any. Thank you so much for your hard work.
Member Picard.
And I do not have any questions, and thank you, guys.
Secretary Sedu.
No questions, thanks.
No questions.
No questions.
No questions.
Thank you very much.
All righty, well, thank you very much.
Next on our agenda is a review of the mid-year budget amendment.
Well, good evening. This evening, it's my pleasure to present to you the recommendation for a mid-year budget amendment for this school year 2223. And with that, we will start with the connection to the dynamic plan. So strategic goal A. with the connection to the dynamic plan. So strategic goal A calls for Plymouth-Canton Community Schools to increase achievement for all students and close achievement gaps. Along with that is strategic objective FO1 and 2, to align financial resources, including state and federal resources, to address areas of greatest need as support for individual students as identified through academic achievement data. And strategic goal E, Plymouth-Canton Community Schools will be recognized as a leader and innovator for student learning and growth. And we will achieve that through strategic objective FO10, ensure district capability to anticipate and respond to strategic change or opportunities in educational service and delivery systems through sound financial planning. And so through that, our purpose through this mid-year general fund budget amendment is attainment of the dynamic plan action items through fiscal responsibility and alignment of resources to district goals, needs, and objectives as identified through academic achievement data. So with that before you, we see a number of resources and activities by those resources to achieve certain outputs, which then would allow us to achieve our short-term outcome goals, our midterm and our long-term outcome goals. So you'll see in the long-term outcome goal column, the to amend budgets throughout the school year. So that is the why for this work. And in June, we will include additional budget assumptions, rather the, as well as past June, in June of '23, the general fund budget was adopted on certain assumptions around enrollment, state aid, and fund balance. And so we'll explore those as part of that as well. So first, we will level set with some historical financial data, and then we will get into the general fund summary around the original budget and the corresponding amendments. So first, we have a chart for you that you may have seen in previous years showing our blended full-time equivalent student FTEs. And it is this value on which we are funded. In simple forms, the student FTEs multiplied by the per pupil foundation allowance value equates to generally our state aid funding. So you can see visually on this chart that in the years since COVID, our enrollment has declined, which is typical of many districts across the state and maybe even across the nation as a result of COVID. The next chart is an illustration of the foundation allowance per pupil FTE. This is that dollar value per pupil on which we are funded. You can see over most recent years, some acceleration and an increase in that dollar value. And across the top, you see a green bar. That bar delineates a value of $10,421 per pupil. And that is the value that the School Finance Research Collaborative estimated as the base cost to educate a general fund pupil, a general ed pupil. So therefore, we have about an $813 funding gap per pupil. And for one year alone, that equates to about $13.2 million, according to that research, to properly educate a general ed pupil. The next slide is a representation of our fund balance, both as a percent of revenue and expenditures. We don't have any dollar values because it gets a little cluttered, but just visually, you can see that our original budget in '23, '24, the green bar, does call for a fund balance amount that does exceed our auditor's recommendations of 15% of expenditures. It exceeds our board policy recommendation of 10% of expenditures. And it also exceeds the Department of Treasury's requirement for exceeding 5% of revenue. So just visually, you can see that we are certainly meeting all of those objectives with our fund balance levels. And our final chart this evening is a look at our fund balance, but more so the enhancement millage amounts that contribute to that fund balance. We collect about $6 million in this past, most recent year for the enhancement millage. So you can see that without those collections, our fund balance would be in a much poorer shape. So with those as a background then, we'll take a look at the original budget that was adopted in June of '23. So in summary form, the total revenue that was adopted and is anticipated for this school year, $203,681,000. Total expenditures were budgeted at a level of $206.4 million. That resulted in a planned use of our fund balance in an amount of $2.7 million. So that was the budget that was adopted in June. That net change in fund balance then gets added to the budgeted beginning fund balance of $37.2 million for an anticipated and budgeted ending fund balance at June 30th of this year of $34.4 million. As a percent of expenditures, that is equivalent to 16.7%. Even without a mid-year amendment, I want to carefully walk you through something that occurred over the summer, and that is that our audit took place, as it does every year. So even without an amendment this evening, we would see a change in our fund balance amounts as a result of that audit. When the budget was passed in June, the audit had not yet commenced. So with that then, we now know the outcomes of that audit. Our beginning fund balance then at July 1st is now an audited value of $42 million. That exceeds the originally budgeted beginning fund balance. So when we add that audited beginning fund balance of $42 million to that net change in fund balance above of $2.7 million, then we have a projected ending fund balance in June of $39.3 million. So even without an amendment this evening, we just need to be cognizant that our ending fund balance has changed from the budget as a result of that audit. So moving into a summary of some of the, a summary of the amendments presented this evening, we'll start with revenues. We first anticipate a change in the property tax collections, but we know that that is coupled with enrollment of our students and state aid as well as property tax collections. So we need to consider the anticipated property tax collections to be bundled with the fourth bullet point of state school aid adjustments for enrollment and special education foundation amounts. So while I could have put them together at the top, I wanted it to flow in the same order as you might see it in the budget format as well as you will see it in the upcoming audit reports and so forth. So with the anticipated property tax decline of about $160,000, as well as an increase in school state aid of $626,000, that equates to about $480,000, $460,000. And with that, a couple of factors are all embedded within that. First of all, our enrollment has shifted. We saw a decline in our general ed student population, but we saw a small uptick in our special education count. But with that, also this year, our special education foundation allowance for special education students is funded at 100%. Last year, it was funded at 75%. So with the change in enrollment, the change in the funding levels for special education pupils, as well as the increase, we know, of $458 per pupil, but that was previously accounted for in the original budget, we then have a net adjustment, an increase in our revenues of about $460,000. That's the net sum of the property tax collections and the state school aid adjustments. From there, we have some additional local property, or rather, some local revenue changes. The JV Turf Field Insurance Proceeds estimate is $488,000. We have discussed at previous meetings that that project, that replacement, may be funded out of a capital improvement fund. But here, we didn't want to lose track of the fact that we knew this revenue is coming, and we wanted to keep track of it because the current repair costs are in the general fund at this time. The pay-to-participate revenue collections are expected to increase by about $30,000. Moving on to more state aid money, we see two new categoricals this year. Section 22L, District Transportation Cost Support, that's additional dollars from the state to support and reimburse costs for transportation in the amount of $1.3 million. We also have a new categorical, Enrollment Stabilization, Section 297, in the amount of $192,000. That enrollment stabilization, those funds are to support school districts, whose enrollment has declined this year in an amount in excess of the average of the last two years of enrollment. So we're seeing some additional supports, again, recommended by the School Research Collaborative to see some weighted funding approaches. Also at the state level, we see changes in the Michigan Public Schools Employees Retirement System. Each year, we receive funding, which is called cost offset dollars, as well as UAAL rate stabilization dollars. The cost offset dollars is a value that you, I believe this district may have seen more typically at the end of the year when that gets reconciled. It's such a significant dollar value that we wanted to include it in the mid-year amendment. The UAAL rate stabilization increase of $2.9 million are those MIPSers funds that are received by the district but then turned around and resubmitted to the state of Michigan. So we see that value on the revenue list, but we also see it below in the expenditure list. That's an in and an out. And then finally, for revenue adjustment, we have P18, Special Education Cost Reimbursement Reconciliation Payment. This was a one-time payment we received this year through Wayne Risa in the amount of $2.8 million. Moving on to expenditures, we have some adjustments there as well. As a result of retirements and new hires and where staff have fallen out into their finalized staff placements, we do have an increase of about $1.1 million in those salaries and benefits. Again, we see the UAAL rate stabilization value there. And then we have increases in program supports, classroom and media center supplies, overall about $675,000. We have an increase in our athletics and activities in the amount of $274,000. We are seeing an increase in maintenance and repairs as a result of attending to some of those issues in our facilities. And those repairs come at a bit of an inflationary cost level. And then also, we know we have expanded our custodial services as a result of the MOU at a recent meeting. So bundled together, that is an additional cost of $731,000. We also have additional transportation costs this year. We've added six new routes, four of those for specialized transportation. And then we also have contracted specialized transportation costs, together totaling a $1.3 million of an increase. And then we have additional communications and marketing costs for a net value of 600, or rather, $361,000. So all of these itemized revenues and expenditures are summarized on the next slide. Just to recap, our original budget then, our revenue and our expenditures, and the planned use of these, of that, of the difference of $2.7 million. The amendments totaling, or rather, the revenue amendments on the previous slide total 11.6, nearly 11.7 million, and expenditures totaling $7.3 million. So as a result of the changes in revenues and expenditures then, we now have an addition to our fund balance in the amount of seven, or rather, $4.3 million. So for the proposed amended budget then, we would take the original budget for revenue of $203.6 million. We add that to the $11.6 million in additional revenue for a proposed budgeted amendment for revenue of $215.3 million. Likewise, we take the original budgeted expenditures of $206.4 million, add that to the recommended amendments of $7.3 million for a new proposed amended budget value for expenditures of $213.7 million. Together, that results in a planned addition to our fund balance of $1.5 million. This will carry forward to the next slide so we can see the adjustment to our fund balance. So with that net change in fund balance of $1.5 million, we add that then to our audited beginning fund balance of $42 million. Therefore, our ending fund balance is now projected to be $43.6 million. And that remains at a percent of expenditures of 20.4%, well within and beyond frankly, the recommendations of our auditors and our board policy as well. So with that, that is the proposed amended budget summary, and I'm happy to take any questions you may have this evening.
Member McQueen?
I don't have any questions right now.
Caught you with a cough drop. I apologize. Member Picard?
I do not have any more questions. I think I estimate FNO, so I'm good. Thanks.
Secretary Sudu?
Thank you. On slide 10, if we could go back. I just want a clarification to my head for this. So we look at the new categorical transportation cost support in revenue increases of 1.3 million, and we see expenditure increases of 1.3. So it's a, we're getting 100% coverage?
Thank you for that question. We discussed that on Thursday evening. It is a coincidence.
Ah, thank you. I was like, whoa, this is right spot on. Somebody did the math right.
Unfortunately, it's not the case. It's a coincidence that that's happening and that our costs have gone up for the special education and that we're getting that additional support from the district. But there was a question that many of us saw in FNO. It's like, well, wait a minute, is this just an offset? And no, it's just, it's a coincidence.
Coincidence. Oh, thank you.
The state aid is based on student ridership counts that were taken in October and then divvied up across the state according to the state's allocation as a whole. So that is a coincidence, a mathematical coincidence. But a blessing that it is covering our additional expenditures.
Yeah, it's good. All right, that's it. Thank you.
Frasier Kehoe?
So what I'd like to draw attention to for the board and for the community as a whole is that this is actually a great budget amendment. The district has done a fantastic job of managing their costs and also recognizing and incorporating the additional support that we got as part of the ESER funds. So a substantial portion of this adjustment, both in last year's audited process as well as in this year's activity, is those ESER funds that we were able to use to support the activities that we have. And although this percentage of fund balance at 20%, this is higher than board policy and higher than recommendations, it is the thing that provides us the cushion as those ESER funds disappear. And so we're going to have actually quite a fairly challenging budget process this year because those ESER funds will not be available to support a lot of the initiatives and programs that we've done over the last few years in supporting learning loss and addressing some of the other challenges that we've had in the district. And this will allow us to smooth out the adjustment of those programs and hopefully address the issues until the state provides us additional money to actually meet our adequate requirements as identified by the nonpartisan Michigan Research Collaborative that allocates the amount of, or estimates the amount of money that's required. So I don't want people to look at this and say, wow, we've got $40 million. This is really a function of us making those good adjustments and achievements that will allow us to adjust out the programs and activities that we're doing. And this will very much be part of this year's budget process.
So I can't, there's a problem with following after Patrick on some of these. He steals my thunder. I just wanted to say that this is a phenomenal, you know, this is a phenomenal amendment, and it is, the district really is to be commended for how they've used their funds. In particular, I was interested in that the, you know, we increased the maintenance, repairs, and custodial services cost, you know, because of some of the issues that people have pointed out. And yet, we still had an increase in our remaining fund balance. So I think that's wonderful, and thank you to everyone that participated in this.
Josh, do you have any questions?
Just one question. So if you could go to slide six, I don't know, five actually, sorry. Four. I have no clue where it was. So I'll just go to my next question. If you could go back to the, with the green line. So is that green line shows the Research Collaborative as in 2021? So if, since it's been a couple of years, would you say that that has gone up even more?
That's an excellent question. Thank you for that. That's a terrific observation as well. And I would say yes. We know that in our economy, since 2020, even 2021, these past two years, we have seen it in our own household budgets, that increase in cost of goods that we buy at the grocery store, the cost of services when we go to get our haircut. And so we know that for sure that has increased. So that's a great question and a great observation on your part. Thank you. The collaborative has not issued, that I'm aware of, more updated value. That is the most recent one that I'm aware of.
Well, because like I see that we're growing closer to the 2021 standard, but we could be the same distance relative if it has changed.
That's exactly right. It's not adjusted for inflation.
Correct.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So following that presentation, this moves us on. So following that presentation, this moves us on to action item number twenty-four dash zero-two dash fifty-five, Consider Approval of the 2023-2024 Midyear Budget Amendment. This is a first and final reading based on our presentation that we just heard from Ms. Minnick. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Vice President, I move that we consider approval of the 2023-2024 Midyear Budget Amendment. This will be a first and final reading, action item twenty-four oh-two fifty-five.
Second. Okay, it was moved by Treasurer Kehoe and seconded by Member Westra. We've, we've asked our questions. Do we have any other discussion that we need to have on this topic? Okay, in that case, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes. Those opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero.
If I may, I just would like to take an opportunity to just thank Ms. Minnick, and I know Ms. Melbourn back there. Both of them are new to position, so really bringing up to speed on the work that we've done and identifying early just some efficiencies and some ways to even enhance our process further going forward. So this is not by chance. It's definitely a team effort, and I just want to publicly thank you for how quickly you got up to speed and really are continuing to head this ship in a great direction, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, on to teaching and learning with Ms. Rao.
Yep, so for your consideration tonight, thank you, Vice President Christensen, we have a first read of curriculum materials for our Other Worlds of Science Fiction and Fantasy course. You may remember, this, this was expanded to a year-long course this year. So last year, we brought it forth. The course expanded to a year-long course this year. It is one of the most popular courses at PSEP. We currently have fourteen sections of the course running, so historically, this course has also garnered national acclaim for the work that our PSEP staff has done around this course. We're very proud, as many of you know, around the variety of courses that we offer. We're unique, and I like to shout out anytime I can, the unique experience that we can offer for PSEP students based on the fact that many districts have English nine, ten, eleven, twelve, but we are really able to implement a variety of choices for students with all the same high-quality structure within. So Other Worlds of Science Fiction and Fantasy, year-long ELA course for eleventh and twelfth grade students, was launched this year. The course really introduces students to worlds of possibilities through exploring science fiction and fantasy. Other Worlds of Science Fiction and Fantasy team recommends the implementation of a book called The Emperor's Soul by Brian Sanderson. We discussed this at SPA, and opportunity was afforded to members if they wanted to take a book and read it. We also have some here today, if you, if anybody wants to see some, of board members after tonight, if you'd like to take one with you between the first and second read. It is a whole-class text that would be used the second semester, so now, in this school year, and it's a novella that actually supplements the first semester novel, Ender's Game, that is used in the course. There's a little bit of information here about the book. It's complex, interesting characters. It has a very strong female protagonist. So one of the things we also look at is how we see representation in the materials that we have, and there's a lot of different opportunities within the book to explore a lot of different things, such as truth, trust, leadership, identity and ethics. It models narrative techniques, including characterization, multiple conflicts into a single overarching plot, use of symbols and irony, and a lot of other things. It's a really popular book. It's in its tenth year, and it was a Hugo Award winner. So Hugo Awards are one of the highest award-winning categories for science fiction and fantasy. It allows our students to make text-to-text and text-to-world comparison, and it would serve as a mentor text because in the second semester of the course, students create their own fantasy short stories as a creative writing experience. Cost for forty-five books would be approximately six thousand three hundred dollars, and that would cover all of the sections of this course. Jan Douglas, our curriculum coordinator, K-12 Curriculum Coordinator for ELA, English Language Arts and Media, is here with us as well, in case there are any questions that you have that I can't answer. I may ask Mrs. Douglas to step up and do so as well. So entertain any questions you might have.
Member McCoyn?
I don't really have any questions, but thank you for offering something that apparently the students really want. Fourteen sections is amazing, and anytime kids are willing to read, it's a win.
Member Picard?
I do not have any questions. Thank you.
Secretary Sedu?
Should have asked this in SPA, looking at the dates. So you need it for second semester this year, and we go through the second read in two weeks. Does that give you enough time to get the books for the timing of the curriculum?
It does, so, yeah, so the answer is yes. So we're prepped to, as soon as the second read is done, we'll order that date, and they will come very quickly because they're from Scholastic, correct? Scholastic, and so they would come quickly, and we've already worked with the vendor in the backside to ensure that they're in student hands.
Okay, good question. Thank you for the question.
That was my question. Thank you.
I just wanted to add that we had a robust discussion in the SPA committee, and it sounds like a fascinating book and an excellent addition to the course.
Josh?
So I have a reputation for reading all the books that have been brought forward, and of course, I've actually read this one as well. It is an amazing book. Very, very good, so I'm glad to see it coming to this course.
I have a question. Thank you, Josh, for your, for your perspective on that. I have a question just around the curriculum team that puts together this recommendation. Can you walk me through who's involved in that? Do we have students involved in selecting the material too, or?
I'll have Mrs. Douglas come up and talk as well. In this case, students were offered the opportunity to vet the book and give input on the book, but we did not have any students take advantage of that this time. We do offer that opportunity every time that we do the curriculum review cycle. We also, I shared with the board previously, our material selection list, that we do a robust look into a variety of things when we look at the representation in the book to ensure that there's no stereotyping and all of those types of things as well. So you want to, could you share with us, please, Jan, who's on that team with you?
Sure, yes. There are currently five high school teachers who are on that team, and some of them who have been with the course for years and have helped with that transition from semester to year-long. They're very invested. It is really a pleasure to watch them work together because they are truly working to make sure that kids have just a wonderful experience and really enjoy this course while they're learning. We have a couple of more curriculum work dates coming up. I have a little checklist for them just so that we can make sure that we have equity among across the courses that we're mapping with curriculum, and we're getting close to being finished with, with that course. So, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so now we have an action item number twenty-four dash zero-two dash fifty-six, Consider Approval of a Resolution for a Course Name Change for Beginning Intermediate Piano to Piano Studies. This is a final reading. Can I please have a motion?
Madam President, or Madam Vice President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for a course name change, beginning in immediate, intermediate piano to piano studies. This will be a final reading, and the action item is twenty-four oh-two fifty-six.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Treasurer Kehoe and seconded by Member Westra. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes. Those opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. Thank you. All right, we're moving on to citizens' comments. I'm not seeing any in the basket, none tonight. Okay. We will move on to action items discussion. We have an action item here, number twenty-four dash zero-two dash fifty-seven, Consider Approval of a Resolution Designating a Representative to Vote for MASB Region Eight Board of Directors' Three-Year Term. So this is a first and final reading. I believe there were three candidates that we had to select from here, so I want to open this up for some discussion to see who we want to, to cast our vote for.
So I had read the materials, and I was going to suggest that we vote for Burget McQuiston. She is currently sitting in that seat. She's been there for several years. She's on Lake Orion's school board, and she's been on that for quite a few years. I've met her at things, and she's very, she's collaborative and open to like learning, and I believe that Ms. Sedu has worked with her on the MASB board as well.
I just want to make sure, do we have a motion on the table?
Were we discussing it first?
We're just discussing, okay.
We'll discuss first, and then we'll.
Okay.
Do the motion, yeah.
I really have no preference on, so whatever.
I've read the materials as well, and I felt that Burget was the, Burget? Burget was the right candidate.
Anyone else?
I want to just add, the candidates were phenomenal, and I want to thank them for stepping up because this is a lot of work behind the scenes, having done it for three years now, and all of the three candidates are very active in their work, so I want to just make sure that people know great candidates, but I do want to recommend Burget only as seeing her rise up in this, having seen her for three years in the Board of Directors' work, not just in the whole committee, but subcommittee work. She's phenomenal with regard to making sure all voices are heard, and she is very organized, very thorough, and again, is willing to grow and look at different perspectives of the board and the perspectives that we bring to the table. So I echo trustee McCoyn's sentiment.
Do we, do we have agreement that that's who we want to bring forward? Okay?
Yes.
Great. Okay, can I please have a motion?
I'll do it. I would like to consider approval of a resolution designating a representative vote for MASB Region Eight Board of Directors' Three-Year Term, first and final reading, action item twenty-four oh-two fifty-seven, and it's Burget McQuiston.
Can I have a second?
Second.
So it was moved by Member McCoyn and seconded by Treasurer Kehoe for, I don't want to, to cast a vote on behalf of the board for Burget McQuiston. I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes. Those opposed, please say no. Okay, motion passes six-zero. Thank you. All right, and we're on to follow-up board questions.
All right, we had two outstanding follow-up board questions from the twenty-two thirteen meeting. The first was related to the Human Resources report. It was a question to see if there is data from the last two to five years to identify barriers for teachers that have left the district. So we don't currently have a report that is generated around that area. We do have exit interviews. People aren't required to take those, but that is information that could be, we could mine that data and get a report that would need to wait for, you just hired Mr. Bedoune, so that's good. If that is something, you know, I was thinking two ways. It would need to either stay on here as an outstanding item. We could suggest that maybe he put that in his first staffing report as an update, so just want to kind of get a feeling on, on what you want, what direction you want to go with there.
I don't mind if we take it off, as long as we know it's going to be covered, because I don't want to lose track of this.
Yes, yes, perfect. The second request was for a list of professional development training offered to teachers this year, and we satisfied that through an email of all of the listing. I was really, as I'm doing that, I'm looking again, that list has grown, I think it's up to three hundred and, was it seventy-seven or thirty-seven? Three hundred and some offering. Three hundred and seventy-seven. Some of them are a duplication because they're also this year, which just has a little bit of specificity to it, but those are all available. And then I captured this evening, from the F and O meeting, an additional question that we would like to add answered, is the feedback on the age of the furniture of those middle school rooms that aren't currently being replaced for furniture as a part of the bond. And are there any additional questions that we had this evening?
I just have a, I just have a request. Josh's question about the rate of inflation piqued my interest. Would it be possible to cast that slide with the, with inflation added? Slide ten.
I would say, though, that that is typically from that, they provide that number, so I think it was, what was it, twenty-twenty, twenty-one? They update it, they donate by inflation, so that might be something we'd wait for them to do, and then we publicize that number.
Yeah.
Because the rate of inflation isn't even across all of those programs, they actually did a reevaluation of that. It used to be like ninety-three hundred dollars, and then they recast it to the ten thousand.
Do they recast it like every two years, or?
It's, it's been less frequent than that.
Right, we recast it one time so far, so.
Yeah, exactly. So we don't, we only have two data points, so we don't know.
Right.
We don't know a trend yet.
I hate to put information out there, and they recast it, and it's greater, and we have people with that cognitive anchor now that it's less. So we definitely, as they do that work, we will definitely update that then.
Fair enough.
If I may add, there could be, there's two variables perhaps. One is that current rate from twenty-twenty-one to be in today's dollars for inflation, as well as the second would be to see if there is a recent update. I don't believe there is, but that would be a different number.
That's a good point.
We'll definitely keep our eye on it, too. It's important information, yes.
Yeah, it would be good to know whether we're at least keeping up with the.
What is that right now with that number? It's like thirteen million dollars, right? And I imagine if it was adjusted for inflation, it's probably even greater per year.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, if we don't have any other items, I'm going to move on to adjournment. It is eight-twenty-five, and I'm going to call the meeting. Thank you very much, everyone, for attending.